He'll be thinking how to call this. This is old.
Mr. President?
I'm Kelly.
May I make a suggestion to all the riders, see these concerned with question one? Can we move on and do 239, 2 through 9, and then come back to one and see if the majority of the board will go along with you?
Second, no.
I agree. Okay. And Alderman Plutus has been patiently waiting.
I have a question on seven because it says "in disposal operations" on seven.
Yes.
And if the residents are still going to be paying that $85 fee next year for disposal, then it shouldn't say that in the question because that's not what it's for.
It is and it isn't, okay? Let me try to re-explain that. I wish we could have kept disposal out of it because it is deceiving, and I think many people will interpret it that way. The $85 will not cover the full disposal cost for fiscal '92 because the tipping fees are increasing, so we need additional monies. Now, what I'm proposing here, and the board of all of you can change my proposal if you wish, is that we don't raise the trash fee, but we raise the additional monies within the property tax itself. If the override fails, we'll have to come back to address that in the trash fee. That's a choice. You know, you certainly have the option. Alderman?
If question seven was to fail, came back to Alderman Plutus just asked, if question seven was to fail, then you would still have that $85 fee would be in effect, correct?
Yeah, it's still a lot.
All right, now, what would that $85 fee now? In other words, you're not going to pick the rubbish up?
We still, we have a contract with the landfill.
Right, but I'm saying, I'm just talking to the homeowner now. They're going to tell the homeowner that we're not picking up the rubbish because question seven failed, but they're still paying the $85.
If question seven fails, we will be forced to make some decisions as a city. Will we help the homeowner find privatization or alternative means of picking up their trash? There are other options out there besides privatization.
Right.
We need to explore that between now and July 1.
The wording in that should be changed, the drop "pickup" and "disposal," or the figure should be changed. That's what you're saying.
If we can, you know, maybe we want to ask the city's solicitor and the auditor, but the problem is, you know, the constraints of the content of the language is very specific, and if the dollar figure remains the same, it will pay for some disposal costs, and that's why that language is written as such. I know it's confusing, and I wish we didn't have to write it that way, but I'm not sure.
I think we should address that as we get to. I think let's.
Make a motion. We accept question two as stated.
Second.
Motion made in second to receive question two and approve of question two, adopt question two to be placed on the ballot for June 25, 1991. Shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $1,820,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding police department operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Motion on the floor is to adopt as written. Any discussion?
What does it mean, got question one now?
No, no, no.
Well. Could we change the order?
Right, that was a, yeah, certainly we can.
Yeah, I mean, did they make two, one, or nine, or four? I mean, we're just asking a question. Yeah, sure. I think, I think a little bit no difference whether one is two or two is one, as long as they all appear on, when they appear on the ballot, they're going to be one, two, nine. If you want to change the order on their seat, I don't think.
I think that's a good point. Two should be one, three should be two, four should be three.
Bill, I think you can. I don't, you know, the City of Springfield did some study to the way they placed their ballot questions, and for the most part, we've mimicked what they did. The difference is, is I put the group question first and then went in order similar to what Springfield did, and I think, as we pointed out tonight, the group question does stand by different, and if it goes first, I think it's easier to explain, but it's the preference of the board.
My second.
Okay, right now, the motion on the floor is to adapt question two as written. Any further discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of that. If you vote no, you're voting to deny it.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
Yes.
Jimmy, you missed me. Yes. By your vote, you've adapted the placing of question two on the ballot. Motion made in second to receive question three and to adopt the place on the ballot for the June 25 special election. So, does the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $1,770,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding fire department operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Motion on the floor is to receive and adopt. Any discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the question as written. If you vote no, you're voting not to place on the ballot. Three.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
Yes.
Jimmy, you missed me. Yes. By your vote, you've approved the placing of question three on the ballot for June 25. Motion made in second to move to question number four to receive and to adopt to allow it to be placed on the ballot as written. Shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $4,358,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding school department operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Any discussion?
Is anybody seeing what happened last night up there at the school board, what they do with their budget? I haven't seen anything.
After I left our hearing, I went to the school department hearing and participated in the tail end of the meeting, which then included some executive session on negotiated, contractual negotiated items. The school department is still in the process of their budget hearings. Currently, they have partially reduced the proposed budget. They need to reduce about $5 million more to get to the figure of $19.2 million, which they've been allowed, under my proposed budget, have been allowed for for fiscal '92. So, they are still in the process of reducing. They are, however, unless the board decides to reduce, oh, I'm sorry, we voted on it tonight, the $19.2 million that was allowed by myself and by your vote tonight is the general fund budget for fiscal '92, the bottom line. Their process being different than the rest of the city is to appropriate by line item before July 1.
Okay, but.
So, they need to make cuts before July 1 to have a balanced budget.
I mean, they can't go above or below $19.
They would be breaking the law if they go above or, if they start July 1 with expenses that would go above $19.2 million, they would be breaking state statute.
Okay.
With the wisdom of the state, they'll have the additional equal opportunity monies also.
Does it make a motion that question four be adopted, pass its first reading?
Any further discussion on the motion to adapt? The court will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of placing question four on the ballot. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Can you read it, Mr. President?
Question four is to schools.
Did you already read it?
Yeah, I read this. It's $4,358,000 for schools.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
Yes.
By your vote, you've approved the placement of question five on the special ballot.
Question six?
Motion made in second to receive question six, adopt for allowing to be placed on the ballot for June 25. Shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $60,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of funding the Hoyop Historical Commission with Stereo Hersch Museum operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Any discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of placing question six on the ballot. If you vote no, you're voting against that.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
Yes.
Jimmy, you missed me. Yes. By your vote, you've approved the placement of question three on the ballot. Move on question three. Motion made in second to receive question three and to adopt the place on the ballot for the June 25 special election. So, does the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $1,770,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding fire department operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Motion on the floor is to receive and adopt. Any discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of placing question four on the ballot. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
Yes.
By your vote, you've allowed question number six to appear on the ballot for June 25. Motion made in second to receive question number seven, adopt for allowing to place on the ballot for June 25 special election. Shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $850,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding solid waste pickup and disposal operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Any discussion? Alderman Welling?
I just, I'm in favor of putting the question on the ballot. I mean, I believe any question's got the right to go on the ballot, but I don't want to confuse the public. As Alderman Plutus mentioned before, there's got to be some way or means where we've got to explain, how I don't know, but we've got to explain that the solid waste pickup and disposal in this $850,000 does not include the $85 fee, and it's got, it's going, in other words, it's going to be about $210 roughly. If this was a pass, your waste of disposal pickup is around $210. Well, it is according to the budget. The budget is 1.7 million dollars, and the $85 is only going to generate $700,000, give or take. In other words, it is confusing, but this is the best we can do. This is what we're all agreeing on.
Under the constraints of the laws, the best we can do, we need to educate and provide facts so voters will understand this when they make their choice. Alderman Murphy?
Yeah, this is, I can't, a lot of apartments, or maybe you can answer. If this passes, the people that own apartments and the people that own businesses, are they entitled to trash pickup?
No, it doesn't change our ordinances, which only allow us to pick up trash in four or less units.
Even though they're going to vote to allow, spend more money in trash pickup?
That's a possibility. One of the purposes for the ordinance that addresses the apartment buildings is to address the situation that the owners of the apartment buildings are operating a business. I think that's the difference, but I understand your point, and it's a good point. Any further questions? Alvin Joyce?
I would just ask, perhaps, suspend the rules, ask solicitor again. If our concern is the confusion that's going to be felt by the voters on solid waste pickup and disposal operations, could we perhaps modify the Department of Revenue and see if we could perhaps change the wording to read something like this? Funding solid waste pickup and some disposal operations or some disposal.
Attorney Cody?
Clarify or it's going to be some purpose on all these questions, and we might be able to explain it in there. Stay for purpose. You're going to have the question and then a statement for purpose. So, we might be able to explain to somebody. Those are questions that we have to, if you operate, if you have to. If you have to. But not the ballot, and I think the voters are going to have this. This is the explanation of what. So, he questions, he'll have the question and then a statement for purpose.
So, if we're able to do that, we can clarify. See if we can, clarify the question. We have to decide on that before we.
I'm sure the newspapers will make that very clear.
Alvin. Alvin Fair?
Justifiably so. This is one of the most important questions outside of the public safety issue, because of the fact that they have to be educated to the fact that there is a trash fee and then you have this separate one. But more importantly, too, is this board has to be prepared to react immediately after this referendum question, to resolve the issue of how we're going to do our trash pickup come July 1 if this question is denied. That was probably one of our, one of our most important tasks, or challenges really, is to resolve this issue. And of course, it's not just an issue that's facing the City of Hoyop. I mean, every city and town in this Commonwealth is facing it, but it is an important one, and it really should, as Mark and Jack brought out, has to be clearly spelt out what the ramifications are on this.
Any further discussion? Alderman Welling?
That's why I had asked earlier if we could have delayed the budget until after the vote, but we couldn't. That was my intention.
It's a complicated and complex question, and I understand it needs a lot of thought and a lot of explanation before we hit June 25, and Alderman Fair is correct in saying we have a lot of work to do between now and July 1.
Take a motion to be adopted.
No further discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve question seven, allowed to be on the ballot for June 25. The court will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of that. If you vote no, you're voting to deny it.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
By your vote, you've approved the placement of question seven on the special election ballot. Motion made in second to move on to question eight, to receive and adopt for purpose of placing on the special election ballot, shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $315,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding public works operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Any discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of placing question eight on the ballot. If you vote no, you're voting against it.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
By your vote, you've approved question eight for the special election ballot. Motion made in second to receive question nine, to adopt for allowing to place on the special election ballot, shall the City of Hoyop be allowed to assess an additional $53,500 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of additionally funding business and economic development services within the Hoyop Economic Development and Industrial Corporation for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 1991? Yes or no? Any discussion? If not, the court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of placing that question on the ballot. If you vote no, you're voting to deny it.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
LeJoy?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Bliscan?
By your vote, you've allowed question nine to appear on the ballot for the special election. Question number one. Motion made in second to receive question number one for the purpose of placing it on the ballot as written. Under discussion, Alderman Rogers.
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to amend that to, yeah, question number one be split to, separately, in the Council on Aging and the War Memorial together as one. Parks Recreation and Forestry as a separate one. Building Codes and Inspection by itself, and the Office of Conservation alone also. There'd be one, two, three, four parts. They'll be in each one. There'll be in each one, Jack. The breakdown was added to, we said so, to be at the outset. Whatever's in the budget.
We can have the auditor apply. Okay. The motion on the floor first is to separate question number one.
I feel like I go ahead and get ready to get hit with that bowling ball.
The motion is to separate the group question and to allow the Council on Aging to become a question with the War Memorial, to allow Parks and Recreation with Forestry to stand by itself, the Codes Department to stand by itself, the Conservation Department to stand by itself, and I guess Financial Support Offices to stand by itself also. Was that included for any motion?
Oh, yeah, I was, I was going through that with the Conservation and.
With the Conservation?
Mr. President, Financial Support Offices, I think that's a combination of all four, so that would be just added on to each one individually. I think that's administrative costs. I thought that was administrative, maybe I'm wrong. Financial Support Off, that's just administrative costs. Right, so that would only be four questions. The Financial Support would automatically.
Okay, the four question would, will break down as, question A would be the Council on Aging with the War Memorial, question B would be Parks and Forestry, question C would be the Codes Department, and question D would be the Conservation with the Financial Support. Okay? The message, the motion is understood. Is there any discussion? Do you need a roll call or just a? It's an amendment, right? Okay, as an amendment, all those in favor, say aye. Are they opposed?
Roll call.
Twelve hands?
Roll call.
Three members have asked for roll call.
You think you can get a strike or a spare in a bowling alley without blowing?
Camel pin or a ten pin. Court will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the amendment, which means you're splitting up question one into the four questions we just stated. If you vote no, you're voting against that, and we'll move to the regular motion.
Luda?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathis?
Yes.
Soskovic?
No.
Wellaham?
Yes.
Chesky?
No.
Devine?
No.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Joy?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Bliscan?
No.
There are six days, six days and nine days on hold.
Original motion is to pass as written. The amendment was defeated. Alderman Soskovic?
Mr. President, I'd like to make another amendment on this, just if we could put like
question one, a Council on Aging and War Memorial together as one question, everything else, they all fall under City Hall departments in one way or another, put those as another question. And my whole concern, I think every single one is very important, but, I mean, the taxpayers, I think they're going to feel like we're stuffing something down their throat, and else, they all fall under City Hall Departments in one way or another, put those as another question. And my whole concern, I think every single one is very important, but, I mean, the taxpayers, I think they're gonna feel like we're stuffing something down their throat, and if we can split it a little bit between, you know, the Council on Aging and War Memorial is basically the elderly services, everything else, you know, is quality of life and so forth, I, I do share some of the concerns some of the other aldermen do, that, uh, I, just like a taxpayer's revolt, they're just gonna give it a no when they see all these things with Financial Support Offices and so forth. So I, even this way, I think we could split it, it'd still be only a total of ten questions on the ballot.
You just beat it anyway.
Council on Aging, Council on Aging and War Memorial is one question, and then the remainder as the other question.
Second.
As like a City Hall Offices type question.
Motion has been made in second, amendment has been made in second, to split question one as follows. Council on Aging with the War Memorial would become, say, question A, and question B would be Parks and Recreation, Forestry, Conservation, Building and Codes, and Financial Support Offices. Any discussion on, on the amendment? Alderman Chesky.
I think that when the mayor first proposed the quality of life question, he looked at what the voters are gonna be primarily interested in, and that's gonna be public safety and education. So when you look at what happened in Springfield, you look at what happened surrounding cities and towns, the little things get bypassed because unless there is a quality of life to them, they're not, they don't seem to be able to get into the mainstream. Uh, when you're taking the War Memorial building, you're talking veterans, you're taking the Council of Aging, you're talking elders, and if you put those together, you might have a pretty good combination. If you don't include the Park, Recs and Forestry, you're probably doing them to never happen because kids who play ball out in the fields don't vote. Are there enough parents who would be that concerned? It's, it's a quality of life question, and I think that the only reason that the two others were put on, Codes and Conservation, was because there was no other place to put them, and there is a need for one more person in the Codes Department and Conservation. If you put that out, and unless you join that with something that's at least going to substantiate it, uh, unless you're conservation minded, unless you have some ideas of what the Conservation Commission went through when the Monarch property was discussed, I mean, that's just not gonna happen. I think when you have a little bit of money, which is less than a half a million dollars, and you're saying, give a little bit to the veterans, give a little to the elders, give a little to the parks, and give a little to, to Codes and to Conservation, you're saying less than a half a million dollars, probably two dollars a month, maybe you'll have a chance to pass. Danny, I, I don't think it probably will, even with all of this input is put together, but at least you're giving everybody the best chance. Otherwise, if you separate it, uh, I, I, either way, I, I, you know, there's gonna be emotional buttons pushed, and I think that when you say let everybody stand on their own or like, you just don't have that kind of lobbying power. Police, that's a big, big public safety thing, it's a big lobbying power. Fire, people wanna make sure that their houses are protected, fire insurance isn't gonna go up. Schools, they wanna see their kids educated. After that, the other things become peripheral, and I think that if you have any chance, if you care for any of these, you'd put them together and say, for less than a half a million dollars, you'll at least allow these to survive, which is not allow them to be good, but at least allow them to survive as they did last year. And I think that's the reason the mayor put them together.
This question will cost about thirty dollars per hundred thousand dollar home.
Right.
Annual. Alderman Kelly.
I just, there's two office buildings on Whitney Avenue, I don't think either one would be there if we didn't have a Conservation Commission to file the ETA reports and all of that stuff, but, uh, that's just a, my comment would be, wouldn't it be interesting to find out if we could, the people that would vote for the Council on Aging and against the School Department? If, Alderman Chesky is right, the School Department is important. If you think the people of Hoyt are gonna pass this, I think you're mistaken. I don't think that they're gonna vote that for that, for that amount of money, and I think that, you know, in the telephone calls I get, I don't have any more kids in school, my kids don't live in Hoyt anymore, you know, my grandchildren do, and I'm certainly gonna support that, but I just don't think it's gonna pass. But Mrs. Chesky makes an important point. By separating these, you're dooming us to, uh, not getting certain reports, by not getting certain support from, from the state, because all of those projects were on the edge of or into wetlands, and they had to file that statement, and without them, we're, we're not gonna get that done.
Alderman Saskevich.
I, I don't wanna come out looking like I'm the bad guy here and that I'm trying to cut these, I think every single department listed in question one deserves their money, wholeheartedly. I realize it's only thirty dollars a month and so forth, but, I mean, I, I'm standing from the position where I think what I just proposed is actually gonna save these departments because I have heard so many people out there that are seriously saying they want a menu override, if they have their way, every single thing would be questioned individually like that. And I, I mean, it's just a matter of perspective, I, I totally respect and understand that perspective where you were coming from, I was originally there, but just from hearing what everybody is saying, they, they want these things individually, they, and I, I think that's what a menu override is all about, I think that's what these people deserve. I, I, yes, I'm voting in favor of every single one of these because they do deserve that money, and I don't wanna make it look like I'm out to break them, I'm not, I'm not, but I also think we owe a duty to the people in, uh, giving a menu override the right way.
Alderman Willan.
I, I just wanted to agree with, uh, with Mr. Saskevich. The only, the only reason I wanted to see them separate because the War Memorial standing by itself only amounts to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's why I asked the city auditor before if he could break it down per hundred thousand instead of per million. When you break it down that way, it only goes out to six, six dollars. So in other words, on the War Memorial, the override for the War Memorial and the Council of Aging is only gonna cost nine dollars. So I wouldn't wanna see the War Memorial lose, lose their, their, their funding if they get caught in with a, with a different group. I'm not saying I'm for or against any of the groups, I'm just saying, this way, when the War Memorial wins or loses, they can say at least they won or lost by themselves. In other words, as Mr. Saskevich is stating, that people are saying they want us, everybody that's told me the same thing is saying they want a menu override with everything separate, War Memorial, Council of Aging, Parks and Rec, police, fire, everything involves a quality of life. Picking up the rubbish is quality of life. If that question falls and we've got rubbish all over the sea, that's, that's part of the quality of life. All we're saying is let everybody stand on their own, and let's hope they all, they all pass.
Alderman Chesky.
And just in response to Alderman Saskevich, it's, it's probably a case of a different perspective, but it's also a case of best chance, best scenario, okay? If, if, if you say emotionally, physically, and fiscally, I will support veterans, elderly, kids, and Conservation, then I will not vote against this. But if you say emotionally, yeah, I support veterans, what the heck with the parks, I don't have any kids playing there, or what do I care about Conservation, I don't know wetland from the other. I'm saying to you, when these small are grouped together, what you're doing is saying, I'm giving them, as a city official, the best possible chance of maybe making it.
Alderman Rogers.
Yeah, Mr. President, I originally put my proposal out, which is so resoundly defeated, it was to give the people their choice. I mean, you talk about, I heard, quality of life, quality of life, that's what I am doing for the people, giving them the opportunity to live their quality of life, period. We're, we're, we're talking Parks, Recreation, Forestry, we're talking War Memorial, the pardon, War Memorial, the Building Codes and Inspections, and the Conservation. So it's up to the people in the city of Hoyt, they're the ones out there gonna vote, and they should have the right to vote on what they want, and it's a damn shame to have the vote come out the way it just did, with all of the other separations that are in here on each and every two through nine, and yet you have to go and lump this first one, which is enough to turn them off. I'm just glad that we changed the numbers, and I'm assuming this will be number nine, and it should be nine, and thereon, whatever way you, with kids decide to break it up, but I'll tell you, it should be the four ways, and that's it, and that would give the people a quality of life that they want and they deserve.
Alderman Stathes and Alderman Joy for the first time.
If you're working out, like, hoping to have it built together, well, and I just like, what's to say, why should I back them up, so I'm gonna vote against the whole thing? But we should work both ways, to say, uh, they could all go down, defeat one person doesn't like one, who's talking. I think they should go individually and vote on each other.
Alderman.
The other thing is that if five hundred thousand dollars might scare the people, I'd just say, I'm not gonna spend five hundred thousand dollars, you know, you're not even gonna reap the list, you're just gonna see that figure, but they're going down six, a hundred thousand dollars and so forth, they may, but I think two things that they could hurt, they could help, possibly.
Alderman Joy.
Yes, make a motion, we move the question.
Motion made in second to move the question to end debate. All those in favor, any opposed?
For three weeks, I'll move the question.
Amendment on the floor is to, amendment on the floor is to redesign question one, come up with two question, one which would include the Council on Aging and War Memorial, and B which would include the Parks, Recreation, Forestry, the Codes, the Finance Support and Conservation. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion is defeated.
And the original motion, Mr. President.
Original motion is to adopt question one as written and place on the ballot.
Roll call and not the...
Three members have asked for roll call on, on the amendment. Clerk of Court of Roe, if you vote yes, you're voting in favor.
This is to split them, correct?
The amendment is to split them.
Split them your way.
Clerk of Court of Roe, if you vote yes.
I don't want to be to blame for it.
Clerk is calling, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the amendment, if you vote no, you're voting Call the, uh, yes.
Luda?
No.
Rogers?
Yes.
Stathes?
Yes.
Soskovic?
Yes.
Wellhand?
Yes.
Chesky?
No.
Devine?
No.
Bear?
No.
Higgins?
Yes.
Joyce?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Joy?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Buschka?
No.
There are six yeas and nine yeas on the roll.
If you vote, you defeated the amendment. Original, original motion.
We lost one, we lost one. He got his little string.
And the original motion to adopt question one to allow to be placed on the special election ballot.
Is it still number one? Yes. We haven't changed.
We haven't changed numbers so far. On a motion, the Clerk of Court of Roe, if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of allowing question one to stand as written for the ballot, if you vote no, you're voting against that.
Luda?
Yes.
Rogers?
No.
Stathes?
Yes.
Soskovic?
No.
Wellhand?
No.
Chesky?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Higgins?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Buschka? No. There's a message there.
Twelve and three.
Well, there you are, there's really different score on here. What's enough out there right now?
If I vote, the, uh, motion carries.
Mr. President.
Item number two. Alderman Fair.
Just a point of information, we have had, uh, in the past, but fortunate, the Gas and Electric were, was able to, uh, add in their flyer the questions of the previous override, and I know that, uh, Mr. Larry is here again tonight, I was wondering if we could impose upon him, uh, tonight to ask him if he would be willing, or if his department would be willing to, uh, print up these proposed questions, put them in a billing, so the voters would have at least a slip of paper that they could go to the, the ballot box with and have a clear indication.
We'll be able to do that in two weeks.
I think that'd have to go to the Gas Electric Commission.
Oh, he's here, just asking if you would be willing to, uh...
All those in favor? Any opposed?
Oh, nothing can be done, you're asking a gentleman to do the impossible.
I, I think it's a request, and if we can...
We doubt our travels putting the suckers in the bills. How does he generally intend it? I'll try to coordinate that with the School Department.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Moving on, item number two.
Motion to receive instead of the Public Service Committee?
Motion made in second to receive item number...
I thought someone mentioned they were gonna take the number out of sequence on the questions.
It was mentioned, but it wasn't made in the form of a motion, and we voted on it.
Okay. Motion to receive instead of the Public Service?
Motion made in second to receive item number two. I...
And we receive.
Alderman Willan under...
I thought I had the point of order here before Alderman Chesky came in. You wanna leave, that's my only question, are we gonna leave them as is? I thought someone wanted to change the sequence. If you wanna leave them as is, I got no problem.
Okay.
Mr. President, Mr. President, before we start, when I started this originally...
Absolutely, that's right.
When I started this originally, we had said we were gonna renumber them. I took two and a half, there's one, three, and two, four, three, and all the way down the line, I took it, so, at least I took it, I believe Alderman Willan, and I think someone, I believe Alderman...
Each, each motion was made with a number before it, and I read the motion that was made with the number before it.
I know, I, I said it.
There's only one question, no, it's Springfield, one, 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 Motion made second to receive and accept. All those in favor, and opposed, so moved. Item number 12.
Receive and send to the Committee on.
Principal and faculty of the John J. Lynch Middle School, we invite you to attend the annual induction of members into the National Junior Honor Society at Lynch School, Friday, May 24, at 9:30 a.m. Motion made second to receive and accept. All those in favor, Alden Willan?
You went too fast for me. Item seven, on the sales tax, have you signed that and sent that to Boston?
I'm sorry. Item seven is a letter from the Taxpayers Association.
Right, that was on the Board of Alderman's, that been forward to Boston, now is our vote taken?
On the sales tax. Oh, you're asking on the original vote on the sales tax? I have not signed it, no.
You have not signed it?
No.
So if you don't sign in so many days, it's.
It will go to Boston without my signature.
Is that possible?
Did, you know.
Yeah, or else you can't ask for it.
And you have to sign it in order, in order for it to go to Boston, I know that. I'm just saying, if, is if you're attempting to sign it, I mean, in other words, I'm to the point now where I was going to rule into withdraw it if the board wanted to, because I'm getting so much flack over it that it's, you know, I don't think anybody understands it, nobody's trying to help me explain it to anybody, and I'm on the phone trying to explain it. So if I'm on the phone every day, an hour explaining it, and you've got it sitting on your desk for two weeks, I don't think that's fair. In other words, if you're going to sign it and send it to Boston, I've got no problem. Right, right. What I'm saying, if it's in Boston, if I'm telling everybody it's signed and it's in Boston, I'm just saying, if it's going to sit on a desk, then why don't we, why don't we just withdraw it then, you know? My intent with that 2% was to hope to give that money to the School Department in case that they've got a problem with their override question, or the city comes up short. Evidently, nobody's trying to explain it, everybody's saying it's on $20,000 cars and $10,000 volts, and you've got it sitting on your desk, you haven't signed it. No, I've got no problem, Joe, I don't want.
I don't have a problem either, except that we're on item number 14.
Then, right, well, then why don't you take item seven, and either sign it or send it back to the board, mark refused, because I don't think it's.
Mr. President, item seven is only a letter.
I understand that, but I'm saying, it's getting to the point now where, in other words, I don't want to get phone calls every day over something that's, after it's not signed after 10 days, I think it has got to be returned to the board for a veto vote, or, in other words, it should be here this evening, would have, you know, been vetoed, or it should be signed in Boston. I'm not saying do that, I'm just saying, if you don't want to sign it, then kill it and get rid of it.
On a motion at 13.
Mr. President, before we get out there.
On 14.
Item 13, is the invitation, which we, the motion is to accept, receive and accept. All those in favor, any opposed, so moved. Item 14.
Receive and send to the Clerk of Committees.
Camden Funds Association asking us to put our traditional annual ad within the program for the annual Fourth of July parade. Motion made second to receive, refer to Clerk of Committees, all those in favor, any opposed, so moved. Item 15.
Receive and send to the Water Department.
Motion made second to receive item 15, refer to Water Department, any discussion?
Water Department.
Water Department. All those in favor, any opposed, so moved. Item 16.
Motion to receive.
Motion made second to receive item 16, any discussion? Alden Willan.
Who do you think you're going to have at 8:15 in the morning, the automatic chambers on a draft on the Avery Dennison Economic Development Plan?
I'll be here.
And I understand that, in other words, they're handing us a building because they don't want to pay taxes on it, is that the, am I off base on that, or, I mean, that's a good public hearing, why don't they make that public hearing about 4:10?
AM.
Well, I don't know, whatever time they tee off, they tee off at noon, so you've got to allow some time in here. At 8 o'clock in the morning.
The hearing itself will take place as posted and advertised here, but there will be a presentation to the Board of Alderman, which will require a vote by the Board of Alderman.
That's what the law says.
Alden Kelly?
I just want to data number 15.
15 is a newsletter.
Yeah, I know, it's just, but a lot of. Do we have a data number?
Be glad to read it. Items, Alden Rogers and item 16.
Yeah, what is that, 16, what is that?
It's a building or a building.
It's a building.
What, the old blank book, the old blank book building?
It's part of an economic, what time is it? It's part of an economic development plan, which involves a building currently owned by Dennison, and a building which Handman Papers Company is interested in. The hearing will allow people to have input in that date. At a future date, a presentation will be made to the Board of Alderman. The city solicitors involved in the project, our Economic Development Corporation is involved, and we certainly will.
And that's your metals division, they don't want the city to buy that, though, right? They're looking for us to buy it?
No.
In our financial situation?
No, no, we're not buying any building, no. Again, this is a hearing, it's the first step in the process, it's just a posting to let you know that the hearing is taking place. Alden Willan?
Well, if they own it, why don't they just sell it to Handman Papers, that what you said, Handman Papers wants to buy it?
Again, it's an economic development proposal, it is a legitimate proposal, which the Economic Development Corporation handles, which we partly addressed earlier tonight with that question about the Office of Industrial Affairs. It involves not the same, but a similar situation, it was the same proposal that we voted upon many years ago, when the Wang Building and the Dennison Company and the Water Department was involved with the land swapping and items like that.
It's a saving.
More details, it's a positive plus for the city in the long run. More details certainly are available at the hearing, and again, a presentation will be made at the Board of Alderman at a future date, a public presentation. This is just an announcement that there's a hearing.
Mr. Howard, Superintendent, first of all, of course, what they're asking us to do in the act of receiving permission from the Board of Alderman is to pay bills that were incurred prior fiscal year and paying on this year's fiscal budget. It's all done, being done within the school department budget, basically to save jobs, of course. We have a communication from the mayor, I mean, through the mayor, that states that a student was hospitalized at the Institute, living during 1988, 1989 school year. He was enrolled in a school program for a six-year period. Hereafter, getting these bills that were rightfully supposed to be paid by the school department, individuals under Special Education Department and legally, the school department's supposed to be paying, and it's a total, it's going to be a city.